Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. My name is Lauren Christensen. I am the School Board President. I'm going to ask my fellow School Board members to introduce themselves, actually starting to my right today. Switching it up. Jennifer Voss, thank you for being here. Titi Westra, thank you for coming out tonight.
Hi, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for joining us on this call evening.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chigsood. Thanks for being here.
My mic thinks I'm very tall. Amin Ahmed, welcome, everyone. Our student co-chair.
Good evening. Josh Patterson, Plymouth High School Senior and Student Voice in Action Co-Chair. Welcome.
Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and the team?
Good evening and welcome. I'm Superintendent Monica Merritt. I'd like to begin by introducing my executive assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here to capture our minutes each meeting. We also want to introduce Mr. John Krieger, and he is there to take care of our technology needs. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Good evening, Jill Minnick. I serve as Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening. I'm Jen Curry, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Abdul Med Yun, Chief Human Resource Officer.
Welcome, Liz Vertanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement. Thank you, everyone. Now let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to the adoption of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda. This is action item number 26-11-18. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 26-11-18.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Member Sudhu and seconded by Member Westra. Dr. Merritt, can you please take us through the agenda?
Thank you, President Christensen. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have leaves, resignations, and retirements for your consideration. We also have the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting, that was October the 28th, 2025, and our special meeting on October 30th, 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Medun, can you please take us through human resources?
Yes. I would like to acknowledge the one retirement we have for tonight. Rebecca Terry, she was retired as a teacher on special assignment, but she was a teacher at Bentley. She's been employed with the district since August of 2000. So we will wish her well in her future endeavors and like give her a round of applause for her service to the district. And that's all we have.
Okay, great. Short and sweet. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have our favorite part of our agenda, celebrating success, with Member Kehoe.
Tonight, the Board of Education is honored to recognize Evan Green, English teacher at Plymouth High School, as part of the Celebrating Success Recognition Program. His students describe Mr. Green as an extraordinary teacher, someone whose compassion, humor, and generosity makes a lasting impact both in and out of the classroom. He believes that the well-being of his students is just as important as their academic success, and he continually works to create a classroom environment where students feel valued, supported, and inspired to learn for the joy of learning itself. His classes are engaging, creative, and filled with opportunities for students to explore new literature, develop advanced writing skills, and connect their personal experiences to what they study. Many students have called his classrooms one of the highlights of their high school experience, where learning feels meaningful, fun, and empowering. Beyond the classroom, Mr. Green continues to make a difference across the PCEP community. He leads the PCEP Improv Club, creating a safe and welcome space where students can express themselves, build confidence, and find connection. He participates in school events, attends football games, celebrates spirit weeks, and even creates an annual end-of-the-year music video for staff, reminding everyone that learning and laughter go hand in hand. At this time, I'd like to invite Plymouth High School Junior Anna Carlesco to share a bit about her experience as a former student of Mr. Green. Anna?
My name is Anna Carlesco. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and I would like to give a shout-out to all the amazing teachers in the school district who go above and beyond to support our students every day. However, one teacher in particular has been recognized by students and staff alike for their outstanding performance. Can I get a round of applause for Mr. Evan Green? Mr. Green was my 10th-grade American Lit teacher, and I have never had a teacher that pushed me to achieve as much as him. He was the one who encouraged me to read more advanced books, write more poetry, and to stand up for what I believed in, whether it be an essay on my hatred of Colleen Hoover or Sidney's essay on the district blocking Papa's Pizzeria. So if you guys could undo that, she'd really appreciate it. Mr. Green's unique grading system lets his students mold their own pair of wax wings, making sure they fly far enough off the ground to avoid the sea spray and soar low enough to avoid the heat of the sun. When I felt like I was drowning in geometric equations and biological processes, I always knew that I would have Mr. Green's class to decompress it. This feeling does not only extend to me, but all of his students. I have yet to meet a student who speaks ill of him because he understands what it is like to be a student. Mr. Green has something most people in this room cannot comprehend, a true understanding of the impermanence of life. In August of 2014, Mr. Green received a life-changing double lung transplant after a year and a half of intense illness due to cystic fibrosis. After this, he vowed to seize every moment, every word, and every opportunity, and that's why I stand here today on the eve of his 44th birthday, a day that he may have once thought inconceivable, to thank him for making his second chance count, to thank him for holding us to what we can accomplish, and for, most of all, to thank him for being a light in an otherwise dark world. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing such kind words, Anna. I'd now like to invite up tonight's extra miler, Evan Green.
I don't like to correct students in a public forum, but I am turning 43 tomorrow. I would first, of course, like to thank Anna, Sidney, and Veronica, who nominated me for this award, and for Anna's incredibly kind words this evening. Their devotion to improving as readers, writers, and thinkers in my class made my job almost too easy. I would also like to thank my middle and high school teachers, who inspired me to pursue this career. Without Mrs. Heil, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Preston, Mr. Dillavah, Mr. and Mrs. Kiefner, and Mrs. Clark, I would not have become a teacher. By 10th grade, I was convinced, due to their passion and devotion to students, that being a high school English teacher was my calling. Although not all of them taught English, they all shared one core trait. They were authentic people who clearly cared about me and my success. I don't think anyone who has ever won this award woke up and said, "Today's the day I'm going to secure the extra miler award." Instead, they show up as a human first and as a teacher second. Only by meeting students where they're at can we ever lead them to the places they never thought they could go. As Anna mentioned, over 11 years ago, I received a double lung transplant. My wonderful wife and amazing son supported me during my two-and-a-half years away from the career that I had always wanted to have, and then they encouraged me as I prepared to return to the classroom. I have now taught longer with my transplanted lungs than I did with my original ones. I have had over 1,000 students in that time, and I am ever grateful to the family who responded to an unthinkable loss with the decision to donate life. It is literally because of them that I am standing here today. I will close by expressing my appreciation to the School Board for selecting me for this recognition and for providing a platform where educators can be recognized in this manner. Thank you.
Mr. Green's dedication, creativity, and compassion embody the very best of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. His work reflects what it means to see, support, and believe in students. On behalf of the Board of Education, we're proud to recognize Evan Green for his outstanding commitment to his students and the lasting contribution to the PCEP community. This concludes tonight's Celebrating Success. Please join Dr. Vertanian Gibbs in the hallway for a photo to commemorate this special recognition, and congratulations.
Okay. Always a hard act to follow. This is why it's our favorite part of our board meetings. Moving on to Board Committee Reports in Action. Up first, we have my president's report. I have a couple of things I wanted to mention. On October 30th, the Board and Dr. Merritt, as a team of eight, got together for a Board Governance Workshop facilitated by MASB. We really focused around updating our operating principles, so I appreciate all of my colleagues' work and effort in pulling together that document. But essentially, it's an agreed set of norms that we all want to abide by when we come here and do this very important work. So each of the Board members signed these operating principles. They will sit at our seats at each board meeting, and they will also, I believe, they will also be posted on our district website as well for others to see. But our Board Governance work doesn't stop there. We have our goals that we've also created for the '25-'26 school year, and we want to continue working on developing action items around those board goals to hold ourselves accountable. And so you'll see later in this agenda, during our discussion topic, we have some discussion around Board Objective Number One. Well, I would like to continue this at each of our board meetings until we make our way through that goals discussion. Next, I did want to mention that Plymouth Canton Educational Foundation has, again, announced their fundraising event. I just want to share a reminder to the community that that's this Friday, and it's a really important fundraiser, as they provide funding, grants to educators, and to our students through scholarships and grants. And this is on Friday evening, 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Fox Hills. Tickets are still available, so if you want to come out and join everyone in this great event, that'd be great. I also want to give a special shout-out and thank you to the Board and Core Team, the Administrative Core Team. We've all pulled together to become a goal-level sponsor for that event as well. That concludes my president's report today. Okay. Up next, we have Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Member Westra.
Madam President, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee last met on November 5th, and we considered two course revisions, new courses, and the teaching and learning presentation, fall data presentation that will take place tonight. Actually, all three items will be brought before the Board tonight. Our next meeting is on, let me make sure I get it right, December 3rd at 5:00 PM in this room. We'd love to have people from the community join us, so if you are free, it meets in this room at 5:00 PM, and we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Up next, we have the Policy Committee with Member Sudhu.
Thank you. I have no new updates since our last meeting, because we haven't met yet, but we do have an upcoming meeting November 25th, which is right before our next board meeting, and it'll be down the hall, so please join us.
Thank you. We have Finance and Operations Committee, Member Kehoe.
We had a number of Finance and Operations Committee members out last Thursday, as well as Ms. Minnick, so we ended up rescheduling that or moving those items to the next FNO meeting. That will be Thursday, November 20th at 5:00 PM, and we encourage the community to join us.
Thank you. Student Voice in Action Committee, Josh.
Student Voice in Action has not met since our last meeting. We've made progress towards setting our initiatives for this year, and our next meeting is Monday, November 17th at 4:30 in the Pioneer Media Center. We hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our Board Committee Reports in Action. Up next, we have our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Christensen. I want to begin by sharing some exciting news that for the third year in a row, Gallimore Elementary School has been recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Report as the number-one elementary school in the state of Michigan. So please join me in giving a round of applause. When you think about the U.S. News &amp; World Report, they recognize schools' achievement based on their high proficiency in reading and math, their language arts state assessments, along with other testing data. We want to shout out Principal Amy Bell for her leadership, and we want to thank the entire school community for their tremendous effort in supporting kids and ensuring that they can reach their highest potential in continuing to get a world-class education. I also want to say this is a collective celebration, because as we know how our tag program at elementary is established through Gallimore, it begins in the third grade, so every one of our 13 other elementary schools serve as the feeder program for this school. So it's something that we congratulate Ms. Bell and her staff, and we celebrate as a collective district, all of our teachers that are responsible for really feeding the young minds of our students in this school. So thank you very much for that, and I appreciate and celebrate their accomplishment. Also, this evening, we are proud to share our first edition of the PCCS Press. Should have landed in your mailboxes earlier this week. This is a magazine that we've done now for a couple of years. We do it twice a year, and it really gives an opportunity for our community, not just our PCCS students, but our residents of Plymouth and Canton, to get an inside look at the best of things that we have to offer for our students and their families. This issue will feature some new faces in our district, so we have an opportunity to introduce some of our newest hires, some specialized learning opportunities at PCEP, some of the recent successes of the International Academy Program. The academic successes of our PCCS students are on display. That was my commitment to this Board and community of delivering on a dashboard, so we had a preview to say, "Hey, it's coming." So a component of that is represented in this magazine, and I will share, December 9th, we're going to have a preview of that dashboard. We're going to have our partners coming here to talk through and share that with our Board and community as we move forward. We also have some 2020 bond updates in the magazine and our award-winning Schools Meals Program. Finally, we have an invitation in there to our park players. They're coming out with their first show for the '25-'26 school year, and that is going to take place, is it next week, November the 14th? This weekend it starts, yes. So we want to make sure that we let our community know to come out and support our students. This magazine is also available online, and it is in different languages online as well. So we encourage all, if you did not receive it in the mail, to go to pccsk12.com to see this wonderful magazine. Parent Council, we want to invite all to our next Parent Council meeting. That will take place on Thursday, November 20th. This is at 5:30. We are going to compete with the Finance and Operations Meeting, so this meeting for Parent Council will take place at our PCCS Educational Support Center. That is 14967 Pilot Drive in Plymouth. And that's a nice opportunity for parents and families to get together and really talk about things that are going on within the district this month. There's going to be a focus on our food and nutrition program, as well as Starkweather Alternative Educational Center. I believe that our Parent Council tries to meet the needs of our community by having morning meetings and also evening meetings, so this will be the first time this year that we've had a later start time for greater accessibility. So we want to make sure that we extend that invitation. I want to end this evening with thanking everyone who came out last week to PCEP's community open house. It was a wonderful evening, an opportunity to showcase the incredible programs and people that make PCCS so amazing. I want to also thank our communications team. They work with our school-based team in order to make this really an exciting evening and informative evening for our community. We had tours of the building, and I know when we think about our job to make big, small, opening up our community and our PCEP campus and allowing our families to tour the building is really, I think, a great step in that direction. We can view a video on the district website, and I want to share that with you right now, thanking our partners from Highway Media and the Communications and Marketing Team for bringing the story of PCEP and PCCS to life. So I just want to share, as we're continuing on with our marketing, our latest video when we talk about our students and the importance of their voice. We want to just share your attention to our latest video snippet of our students.
We serve 16,000 students, and that can be intimidating, so we work really hard and intentionally to make large feel small.
I've met so many new people, and it's like being accepted into a whole new community, and it's really a nice environment to grow as a person.
I recognize that a lot of schools, although great, don't have the same opportunities that we do here at PCEP. The culinary program is incredible. The radio program is incredible. Everything is incredible.
We do a lot of deliberate things to connect with students. We make sure that students in their first year typically stay in their own building and their home school. We think that's important with getting them acclimated to the size of the park.
Everything is very chill, and it's very just comfortable here once you know what you're doing.
I know it might seem a little bit scary coming to this huge place, but once you are here, it doesn't feel as big as it looks.
We really work very hard to make sure that every student feels supported.
We know our students by name. We know our students by strengths. We know our students by needs.
So this video is available on our website, and we'll also do some efforts to maybe get this out through email to our school community, because we always want to really brag on and share the amazing opportunities that we have for our students here in PCCS. That concludes my report for the evening.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Merritt. Okay. Up next, we have Citizens Comments. This is our first section of Citizens Comments. It lasts 30 minutes. If we have any remaining citizens' comments that move us past that 30-minute timeline, we will hear them later in the agenda. As a reminder, each citizen has three minutes to speak. The Board will not respond, but this is your time to share. The administration will follow up with each individual who participates in Citizens Comments. As a reminder, please do not share any names when sharing concerns or criticisms unless you otherwise have permission to do so. I'm going to start with the first comment here. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. We have Rachel Hayes.
Would it be okay if I gave my spot?
That's totally fine.
Sorry about that. The kids are so disruptive. They normally are really super-behaved.
Don't apologize for them.
No, yeah, that's fine.
They're wonderful. You're good.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent. My name is Mary D. Martinez, and I am not, sorry, I am not a Plymouth resident, but I am a proud Wayne County resident and owner of a local publishing company called 1995 Martinez Storytime. Through my publishing company, I created a children's book series titled The Venture Abroad with the McComas siblings. The series teaches children core values and the importance of making good decisions that serve your bigger picture. The story follows American twins as they travel across the Atlantic Ocean on an exciting adventure to Paris, France, to study abroad. This fast-paced, entertaining story keeps young readers engaged while also teaching them meaningful lessons that inspire success in their own lives. I absolutely love visiting classrooms to host unforgettable storytime and creative writing workshops. I also own All American Parties LLC, a family entertainment company that specializes in theatrical performances, balloon arches, and face painting. My main goal is to spark the imagination of young readers and show children the power of passion and effort, helping them see that they can too create and share their own stories. If you know of any classrooms that would like an author to visit, let me know. I'd be honored to connect. I will leave business cards for anyone interested. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you do for our students and community.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Rachel Hayes. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know what I said.
Yeah. You got it? Okay. Bye. All right. Hello. My name is Rachel Hayes, and I'm a PFLAG Board Member and a member of Western Wayne Indivisible. This Thursday, the State Board of Education will vote on long-overdue updates to Michigan's health education standards that finally reflect reality by including gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. At the last meeting in Lansing on October 14th, right-wing extremists came out in force to fight these evidence-based updates, including MEMS for Liberty, who once again tried to disguise ignorance as conviction. They, along with one of our own board members, came armed with culture war talking points and lies, not evidence or facts. A favorite refrain of theirs is that we should focus on academics, not inclusion. Ironic words coming from people who reject science, rewrite history, and ban books. Here's the truth: Kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. A child bullied for who they are isn't thinking about multiplication tables. A student hiding anxiety, fear, or shame can't absorb a grammar lesson. When we make children feel inferior, we're not protecting their education, we're sabotaging it. Let's be honest, the focus on academics argument is actually saying, "Don't acknowledge that those kids exist." But those kids do exist, real children with real feelings. They're in our classrooms every day with unbounded potential if given the chance to thrive. They're our future. If we fail them, we fail all of us. You can't raise performance by silencing identity. You raise it by building schools where belonging fuels achievement. You raise it by creating schools where every kid actually wants to show up. Here in PCCS, we already know this. Our dynamic plan's goal B commits to ensuring every student feels physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented. That's not political, that's evidence-based education. We have a lot of work to do, but we should be proud of our inclusive policy for trans and gender nonconforming students, and proud of the Board majority that continues to stand firm despite the constant noise from one member. Holding firm to what you know is right is holding the line for our kids. Thank you for recognizing your obligation to every child in the district and not letting a small minority dictate what is best for all of our students. And I especially want to thank Jennifer Voss for showing that leadership isn't about appeasing anyone's agenda. It's about empathy, courage, and the conviction to care for every student. That's the kind of leadership that reminds us what education is really about, not just grades and test scores, but the human beings behind them. Because when students feel safe, they show up. When they're seen, they engage. And when students feel accepted, performance doesn't just improve, it soars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Nancy Farber.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Nancy Farber. Before I begin, I thought I'd try speaking the language of our students. Words like "riz," "no cap," "low-key," "it's giving," and my favorite, "6'7". Okay, I have no idea what I just said, and I know it's pretty cringey, but here's the segue. Talking about what really matters to young people can feel awkward. Still, acknowledging the realities of their world, sex, identity, and relationships isn't optional, it's essential. It's been nearly two decades since the Michigan State Board of Education last updated its sexual health guidelines in 2007, and 20 years since our district revised its reproductive health and family planning policy. The world our kids are navigating is very different, thanks to social media, online access, and greater awareness of identity. As a result, young people are asking for broader, honest, more relevant info on sexual health and safety. They're asking for classes that teach about healthy relationships, consent, digital boundaries, and emotional well-being. They want education that acknowledges trauma, reflects their lived experience, and gives them real tools for adulthood. When we don't provide that, students turn to TikTok and peers who are just as unsure as they are. We owe them better. We have the means and ability to- We have the means and ability to provide medically accurate, age-appropriate, and compassionate instruction led by qualified teachers who can answer questions with care, not judgment. Inclusive sex ed also strengthens school belonging. When we teach about sexual orientation and gender identity with respect, bullying decreases. Queer and trans students feel seen and safe. No student should fear being themselves in a place built for learning. Ultimately, this is about trust. When our schools offer research-based, comprehensive guidance that reflects today's realities and is shaped with the input from our local parents' sex ed advisory board, we send a powerful message to our young people. You matter. Your identity is valid. Kindness is the standard. And learning about who you are is something to take pride in, not hide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Jason Mercado.
Good evening, Dr. Merritt, staff, and members of the board. Early last summer, several concerned parents and athletes, myself included, approached the school board seeking to reinstate our cross-country coach. We felt that our boys had prospered and grown under his tutelage and wanted him to finish the job he had started. With your help, he remained our coach for this season. I imagine you don't always hear back on the results of decisions you've made, but I'd like to take a few moments to share some of the accomplishments this team. They were the, this year, they were the Rambling Rock Invitational Champions. And that was both for varsity and JV, and the freshman team finished second. They were also the Wayne County Champions, which was the first time since 2014 that they won the Wayne County Championship, and JV also finished first. They took third place in the KLAIA Conference, placing only behind the eventual state champion Northville and top-five finisher Brighton. They were the PCEP Park Champions. They finished second place at the MHSSAA Regional Six Championship, and it was the first team qualification for the state championship since 2020. In addition, we had four Rocks make the All-Region Team. They finished in 15th place at the MHSAA State Championships, and 10 runners broke the 17-minute mark for the 5K, including one breaking 16 minutes. 10 runners entered or improved their standing in the Sentry Club, which is for those whose personal best rank in the top 100, personal bests in school history. And then four of the top 30 fastest season records were posted by this year's team. And more importantly, 28 of 34 runners achieved personal bests during the season. As you can see, this was a very good season where the team took significant steps forward. But more importantly, these runners learned to set goals and work hard to achieve them. These are skills that will serve them for the rest of their lives. I've seen Coach take the time to pull aside and coach up boys who are struggling, frustrated, or disappointed in a result. He also publicly praises boys when they have achieved a personal best time or taken significant steps towards achieving their goals. My son really appreciates the coaching that he has grown tremendously as a young man and runner by working with Coach. I'm proud of all the boys, and thank you for your time and for your help.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Lori Mears.
Members of the board, Superintendent Merritt, and administrators, my name is Lori Mears. I'm a longtime Plymouth resident and president of PFLAG Plymouth Canton. I'd like to talk tonight about the importance of representation, when children can see themselves reflected in the subjects they are learning about, the books they are reading, and the media they are consuming. Dr. Lilly talked last month about how important it is that each student's name is known, including its correct pronunciation. That's so important in our diverse community. Seeing people who look like ourselves also contributes to our sense of belonging, which contributes to success at school. That's why the new proposed State Board of Education Guidelines on Health are necessary. Among its 51 pages covering mental health, substance use, healthy eating, and sexual health are literally three sentences in the sections for middle school and high school. The guidelines, which are not mandatory for school districts, recommend defining gender expression, gender identity, and sexual orientation for middle schoolers and for high schoolers discussing, quote, "how to foster empathy, inclusivity, and respect around issues related to gender and sexuality," end quote. I know there are some people who hate those ideas, but we are not living in the 1950s. Gay and trans people exist. Many kids in our school district have LGBTQ parents or grandparents. Many of our staff members are part of the community. Many students know themselves to be LGBTQ. Let's tell them all. We see them, and we respect them. Representation in reading material is also important. There is a book being challenged in our schools now, a graphic novel called Drama by Reyna Telgemeyer. It's published by Scholastic and recommended for grades five through eight. It's a charming story about a middle school drama in which, spoiler alert, a girl likes a boy who likes boys. It's a sweet, popular book in its 20th printing, and the Canton and Public School Library have multiple copies of it. If we ban it at school, we're saying it's only okay for kids to read about crushes if they're straight crushes. Please don't remove it from our school libraries. Kids should be allowed to see themselves there, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Heather Gatney.
Hi, my name is Heather Gatney, and I live in Plymouth and have two kids in the district. I'm here tonight to thank you for holding the anti-bullying policy training last Tuesday with our school principals during the Professional Development Day. I understand this session covered both the district's anti-harassment bullying policy and the transgender and gender nonconforming student policy. Many members of our school community, myself included, have been advocating for this training for quite some time. I really appreciate that you listened to our concerns and responded with meaningful action. Queer students in particular face bullying and harassment every day at school, and training like this sends the message that their school community will stand up for them. Now that the principals have received this important training, I'd like to ask, what is the plan to make sure all teachers and staff in our schools get this information, too? Are there clear guidelines for when and how principals will share what they learned with their teams? Also, will there be any verification to ensure the training actually takes place at each school? It's crucial that everyone who interacts with our students is included, from classroom teachers and cafeteria staff to office personnel and bus drivers. Every single person matters. Recently, my own child shared an upsetting story about a friend at a PCCS school. The friend was asked by a staff member to line up with other students, girls in one line, boys in the other. When the friend explained that they are non-binary and couldn't choose a line, the adult got irritated and told them there are only two genders. The adult then ordered the child to get into a particular line. This happened while all of the other children were watching. These types of interactions leave queer kids feeling singled out, misunderstood, and unwelcome in a place that should feel safe. This incident was entirely avoidable. School policy states every student has the right to be addressed by their chosen name and pronouns that correspond to their gender identity. I believe this situation never would have happened if the staff member had received training on the transgender and gender nonconforming student policy. That's why it is so important that everyone in our schools receive this training. It's not just about policy. It's about protecting all students and making sure every child is respected and feels safe, no matter who they are. When every staff member understands the policies and knows how to respond compassionately, we can prevent harm, create a more welcoming environment, and show our commitment to inclusion and respect. To do this well, it's important to set clear expectations for when and how this training will be delivered. There should be a consistent process at every school and accountability measures in place to verify that everyone completes the training. Ongoing opportunities for refresher training and open discussions would also help staff feel confident in responding to complex and sensitive situations. So, thank you so much for taking this step. It's making a real difference. Thank you.
Up next, we have Laura. It doesn't look like we have a last name. Do you mind sharing that when you come up, please?
Hi, I'm Laura Bavir, and I'm with Drama Kids. And we are an after-school developmental drama program that is for elementary school students. So we're not a production drama. We get our students ready for developmental drama, which means we're building lesson after lesson so that they are able to walk away from their classes or walk away from their drama enrichment classes with confidence, with public speaking skills, with social, you know, ability. I'm a mom of a five-year-old who is a pandemic baby, and she is a lot different than her older sister. Her older sister's very outgoing, but she is not. And so I did a lot of research on these types of children, and there's a lot of them out there that need some more social engagement. So I started Drama Kids recently in Northville, Livonia, Novi, and South Lyon, and we're doing really well. And so I'd love to figure out how to get it into the Plymouth Canton Elementary Schools. And I will be at the back for the evening, so if anybody wants to share any names with me or wants to take a card, I'd love to talk about drama in elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Michelle Mustakis.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Mustakis. I'm an 11-year resident of Canton and a member of Western Wayne Indivisible and PFLAG. And I love our public schools. They are the heart and soul of our community. And when our community thrives, so do our schools. But when our community suffers, our schools also suffer. Right now, we have serious concerns in our community. Budget cuts, hungry children who've lost staff funding at the direction of our government, unaffordable healthcare, parents being deported, and gun violence, just to name a few. So with all this going on, what do we have a small but very vocal group focusing on? We have them focusing on taking away protections for our LGBTQ students. And why? Because they're stoking fears that these students will be, particularly the girls, will be attacked in our bathrooms by transgender students lurking in the stalls. Let me make it clear. I don't fault the girls for being fearful. I put the blame on the adults in their lives that are putting these fears into their minds. But here's the thing. Nobody ever asks them questions about where are these fears coming from? What are the facts? So here's the facts. Researchers have found no evidence that allowing transgender people to use bathrooms aligned with their gender identity leads to increased safety risks for other students. Indeed, the evidence shows that transgender people themselves experience high levels of harassment and assault in restroom settings. So, what's, yeah, why are they so concerned with LGBTQ students? I think they're targeting them, it seems, because they're just uncomfortable with their very existence. For many, their view is largely based on a few Bible passages, which they have twisted to suit their agenda. But the good news is that there are a growing number of churches, including mine, shout out to St. John's, that are appalled at the harm being done by people that wield the Bible as a weapon of hate. We are fighting back in our church communities by choosing instead to focus on the gospel message of love and care for one another, especially for our vulnerable communities. We're not asking you to get involved with matters of faith. It's not your job. We know you can't solve the problems of our communities. But you do have the power to approve and implement policies and curriculum that will help our students learn to separate fact from fear. We applaud and support you for your efforts in this area and ask that you continue to stand for every student's right to be supported, respected, and recognized as a unique individual with hopes and dreams that our district can help them achieve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have, is it Priti Kulkari? Please correct my pronunciation.
That was right. It's Priti Kulkari? Oh, good. Yeah, thank you. And this is my first time, so I have not prepared anything as such. But I came here to represent one of the question, one of my friend had asked last time. She was not able to come here. So it's, just give me one moment. So it's Hasina's question, and that was related to sustainability. So I think she had brought up in last meetings that the landfill in Canton is kind of about five to seven years now to be filled up. So obviously, the whole community will be, or should be, thinking about what should be done, because eventually it will fill up, and then, you know, problems will occur. But then, as a school, what efforts are we taking to bring awareness in children about what things they could do in their small little things to support sustainability? Or to, you know, make sure that landfills or how we can recycle and landfills will not be filled quickly? So that was the main point that I wanted to bring up here, and I just want to make sure that I'm not losing anything that she wanted to. Yes. So basically, are there any measures in place currently to reduce the overall waste footprint generated by our schools? And are schools recycling everything? Are students encouraged to recycle food, waste, paper, electronics, et cetera? And how are reuse, reuse, recycle being implemented? And what about composting to reduce food waste? Especially since the launch of the Free Food Program, we do see that most of the kids do take the free lunches that are available, but we are not sure if they're consuming everything or they're thrashing the things that they do not like. So that is a point that we would like to see that, you know, how we are composting that. I think that's it. A lot of learning for me. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for listening to us.
Okay, up next, we have, I believe this is Joan Pence.
Sorry, I was moving in my foot. One hit, damn foot. Don't grow, whatever you do. I don't know what the alternative is, but hello. So my name is Joan Pence. I'm a resident of the district and have taught biology in the district in one form or another for 38 years. I'm also certified by the state of Michigan to teach reproductive health. I'm here to speak to the proposed new guidelines for reproductive health. There are two things I have learned about my students in all those 30- There are two things I have learned about my students in all those 38 years. In some ways, they know nothing about their reproductive system. The most frequently asked question, even with senior high school students, is, "I can't get pregnant if..." dot, 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 dot. That's frightening. So, that was after the end of the unit. So, it's, it's really, it's hard for them to absorb this information because of the freight of it, but I feel like it's really important that we be very honest with them. So, but in the other ways, they know everything. That everything involves what kids know, but rarely speak of to the adults in their lives. That would be gender. They know in their hearts from a very early age, long before they choose to speak to us about it, what their identity is. And it is for that reason, I believe, that they understand and accept their peers far better than the adults in their life are likely to know. So, if we are teaching kids about LGBTQ identities, we might be reminded that we are not teaching them anything that they don't already know, but rather acknowledging their own lived experiences. The only thing our silence does is teach them that there is something wrong with this conversation, and that what we think we are protecting them from is our silence. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That concludes this section of Citizens Comments, and we will not be using the overflow section. Okay. Up next, we have Administrative Reports and Recommendations. First, we have Teaching and Learning with Ms. Curry.
Good evening. Tonight, Mr. Flukes and I, we will be providing a high-level overview of our district progress towards our goals. Oh, let me, maybe not.
I had to switch a couple of slides. So, I shared the PDF with you.
Okay, point this way now.
Just point for down. And it will work better for you.
Got it. Okay.
Point it backwards.
Oh, there, oh.
Slow, so you have to be patient.
Here, I'll let you do that. That's why we make a good team. So, good evening. Tonight, we will provide a high-level overview of our district progress towards our goals, highlighting current data on student achievement, attendance, and social-emotional well-being, and how this information guides our ongoing work. While these data points do not capture every aspect of our district, they help us identify strengths, pinpoint areas for growth, and ensure we are meeting the needs of all students. Our commitment is to use this data to drive improvement, advance equity, and celebrate our accomplishments. And tonight, we will focus specifically on Goals A, B, and D. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Flukes.
I usually get the pleasure of sharing you all the nice, fun charts and graphs, so I try to intersperse some pictures of our kids throughout the presentation, so to kind of lessen the blow, or make it a little bit easier to get through the slide presentation. So, um, slow. There we go. So, I wanted to clarify what the pieces of information we'll be sharing tonight in this slide, and also point out that this is really large-level data pieces. These aren't the data pieces we use to drive our everyday steps in the classroom and the buildings, but they do give us some directions for where to dig deeper and to seek more information to identify patterns that we might be seeing within our school district. And we're going to talk about our demographics, what we see this fall, attendance behavior, social-emotional competencies, and perceptions of school, which is the Panorama Survey. And then, we'll talk about a couple of different pieces of achievement data. All right, demographics. They really have remained fairly unchanged compared to last year. So, these will look fairly familiar in terms of proportion of our students in each of the major race and ethnicity categories in the community. And this is what that looks like, if you kind of stack that up and see what that looks like, looking at all the students in our district. We also serve and support students in additional student groups, economically disadvantaged. Again, that's a few percentage points lower than it was prior to the universal lunch meals program, so that more than likely, it might be more students that really do have some economic hardships. But that is the official rate currently, as well as students with IEPs and multilingual So, let's talk a little bit about some of the attendance and behavior from this fall. In general, it's very similar to last year at this point. We're about a 95% current attendance daily rate, a daily attendance rate. And all different student groups are within about 2%. When we are looking at just two months of the school year, things can get a little bit erratic, so we like to look at, at the end of the year, we'll share kind of that full year data for all of our student groups. And then, suspension's similar, with just two months under our belt, we're about the same number of suspensions as we had last fall. But also, I'd like to point out that we supported students with over 100 restorative and mediative practices, not just related to suspensions, but to overall incidents may have happened in our school buildings. And we will monitor those, and we continue to monitor those throughout the school year with our, the data tools we have, and then we'll present full year data at the end of the year.
So, up here, you'll see some strategies and next steps for supporting students' attendance and behavior. Our support staff includes specialists in behavioral and academic needs, as well as paraprofessionals who, and staff who focus on guidance and restorative practices. Through an equity-based, multi-tier system of supports, it's our goal to ensure all students have access to the help they need, including student support, check-in, check-out, counseling, restorative practices, and strong communication with families. Teachers and instructional coaches also collaborate to promote overall student success.
So, that we have to go too far. So, now, we're going to switch and talk about some of the social-emotional competencies. And we're going to start off by kind of highlighting kind of the why around why we collect this information.
Jonathan, can you, can you stand in front of the microphone, Jonathan? Sorry.
We're trying to make it too easy for you. So, the purposes of this are really about capturing student voice. That's one of the main things. And also, there's a lot of research around why these things, and looking at these things, can inform what we know about learning and schools and the classrooms, and improve those experiences for students. So, that's kind of the why behind these perception surveys. And then, we'll talk a little bit about some of the supports.
Sure. So, we provide socially-emotional learning lessons for students, and use data and our staff expertise to drive targeted interventions where extra support is needed. Progress is carefully documented and monitored to ensure effective ongoing improvement. Additionally, you've probably seen, we have therapy dogs throughout some of our schools who offer students a calming environment to help them manage emotions and recover from challenges.
Now, we'll look at some of the data share. So, I'll start by, with the Panorama Survey. So, these topics haven't changed. So, you'll see the next few slides are about the topics that are in each of the different surveys. Those haven't changed, but you can, they're here for your reference. And this is what's on the Teacher Perception of K-2 Students Survey. These are the six topic areas. And then, I'm going to share the topic areas for the 3-8 survey. So, these are the surveys that the students themselves take in grades 3 through 8. Again, these haven't changed, but these are kind of some example questions, as well as an overall topic area. And I also want to point out that at this grade, students are also, as you see at the very bottom, they're also asked a free response question, where they get to share what can teachers or other adults do to better support you or better help you in the school. So, we did collect that, the words directly from students on the survey as well. And then, our 9-12 survey did change a bit. So, we did pare down the topics that were covered in the 9-12 survey, in part to kind of focus in some of the topics that we felt were most important for the high school students, and to hopefully encourage a little bit more participation, because we did have fairly low participation the previous spring from students. But again, also, they have a chance to share what teachers or other adults can do to better support them as well. So, this is a multi-year slide. So, each bar, starting from the left, is when we first started collecting some of the student survey data, both in the K-2, the 3-5, the 6-8, and the 9-12, and how many participants or how many responses essentially we had for each term. And so, you get to see kind of whether, how much that's kind of been volatile at the high school level. So, it's part of the reason why I wanted to kind of focus some of our efforts on some of the topics and really get the word out. And on the right side of the screen are the current participation rates for this current data collection from the fall. Since we had all that data, all the multi-year data, let's look at all the topic area changes over time. So, we'll start with the K-2 survey. I want to start with the takeaways here, because really, I want you to kind of see the forest through the trees in terms of, going back to the previous slide, in that we've had very high participation, basically from K-8. And you'll see that the students consistently are rated higher in the spring. You can kind of see the up and down, up and down, up and down with the K-2 survey, because students, again, these are our youngest students, K-2, and so, they tend to develop a little bit more throughout the year, so they're slightly better at emotional regulating, they're better at some engagement and some emotion regulation, social awareness. So, they tend to get better throughout the year. So, that's why you see kind of that up and down from the fall to the spring. But in general, they've been very consistent, and that we've seen emotion regulation, and social awareness, and engagement being some of our strengths of our students. But also, seeing that we still need to develop and help those students develop their self-management Following that same trend, so now, we'll look at our elementary students in grades 3 through 5. Again, these are the topics that are assessed and asked about on the survey. Again, going back to the previous, we did have high participation. All of our topic areas from this fall, those are the, kind of that center column there with the, around the 70th percentile in the middle. They're ranked highly when we compare ourselves to a national sample of other 3rd to 5th grade students throughout the country. And what we see is that we have some pretty consistent strengths in terms of supportive relationships, self-management, and teacher-student relationships. And then, growth mindset and emotional regulation continue to be areas that we like to see, we like to improve more and grow more out of our elementary students. Now, moving to our middle school group. Again, referencing the high participation, our topic areas rank pretty highly compared to a national sample. You can see growth mindset has dipped a bit in terms of the comparison. And it's one of the ones that we would, might highlight as an area for improvement, but diversity, inclusion, supportive relationships, and self-management have been consistently performing high in terms of percent of students rating them favorably, and as well as our comparison to the national sample. And when we move to our high school survey, now just looking at the topic areas that we are addressing in this fall, we're looking at the trend over time. And we did improve our participation compared to last year. And we are seeing, if we look at some of the highest, so we've seen that students are reporting the highest favorable ratings to date, so we look at this fall as some of our highest of those four areas since we've been asking those questions of students over the last few years. But our sense of belonging in teacher-student relationships do kind of warrant some greater focus, and those have been highlighted in our building improvement plans. That sense of belonging is a core piece of what you'll see in our building improvement plans throughout the district. I do want to highlight, this is, it's hard to see here, but I just want to highlight those two spring testing times when we had really low participation rates, so we just want to be careful about making too much, or drawing too many conclusions from those two dates there, since we had very low participation rate those two times. And this slide just links to a newsletter that we have available on our website that just talks about a lot of that information. It has sample surveys, it has some of the logic for why we collect this information, has a link to the Panorama's privacy information, as well as in this slide that links to this fall's summary reports for each of those four major surveys. And now, let's talk a little bit about, or a lot of it about, achievement. So, I wanted to point out, so we're going to be looking at four different assessment types to kind of highlight some of the things that we're seeing this fall, and some information from this past spring. But I want to highlight that not every assessment was built the same way, and they are built for very different purposes. So, we're going to first look at the state assessments, which were built and designed to measure how much, how much students know in relation to the state content standards. And they provide, you know, kind of at a very high level for the state, and for the nation to really look at how well are our systems doing overall. We'll also share some local NWA MAP growth data. And these tests were designed for slightly different purposes. They weren't designed to specifically measure whether or not a student was at their grade level on their content standards. This is more about how much do students know, and how much are they growing throughout the school year. So, that's why NWA MAP is part of our system. And it does not indicate whether or not a student's proficient or on grade level. It's about what do they know, and how much are they growing throughout the school year. We'll also highlight some positive information we found by looking at some of our high-achieving students who are participating in our AP courses and taking the AP exams. And those things are, those tests are designed to measure whether or not students are mastering the content and skills of those courses. And part of the purpose of that is to offer students opportunities to receive credit or advancement at higher ed. And we'll also share some of the work we're doing around early literacy by sharing some of the DIBELS data, which is designed to identify students who might need some additional support around those foundational literacy skills. So, starting with the state assessment, this is a four-year trend of percent of students who are meeting state standards on each of the content areas, grades 3 through 8 and 11, in ELA, math, science, and social studies, and the grade levels that they're collected. And if we look at our comparisons of the previous year, we saw some improvement in grades 3, 5, and 6 in ELA and math, and grade 8 science, and grades 5 and 8 in social studies. And as a comparison to that blue line are the rest of the state in light green, and the rest of the county in red. Now, looking at our PSAT and SAT performance. This is also a four-year trend, but you can see there's kind of a break in the line there. That's when the college boards switched from their paper test to their digital test. And it did, we did see some impacts across the state on how students performed once they made that switch from paper to digital. But if we look at our performance from last year in grades 8 and 11, we've made some improvement in ELA, and improvements in grade 11 in math, English arts, and math. And again, we'll have the state and Wayne Risa as kind of comparisons. Now, switching to NWA MAP, again, this is about student achievement and growth, so that's where these tests were designed. And what they changed this year is they updated their norms, which these kinds of companies do on a regular basis every several years. And this is probably more important, because it captured some of the post-pandemic effects. So, they wanted to capture kind of post-pandemic how students were doing. They wanted to update just, demographics always change around the country, so that includes updated demographics, as well as a new logic they put into their test to pick items that were more grade level specific for students. So, all of that is incorporated into their new norms. And this is kind of a sneak peek at cohorts of kids. So, if we take the same group of kids over the last two to three years, and the kind of average or the median percentile rank for those students over that time. And generally, what you see here is that overall, the district is very high-performing. That gray bar is the national average range of 40 to 60th percentile. And PCCS has consistently, has been consistently above that for the last several years, in both reading and mathematics. And you can see that we're pretty stable in some areas. We've made some gains in some, in others, and some in some areas. We've made some gains in some, in others, and some, we've had some dips and then rebound. So again, these are satellite data, and these really kind of give us information on where to dig deeper and get more information. And if you want to look at our specific data this fall, the slide will advance, there it is. So this is just highlighting this fall and grade level performance. So you can see them next to each other in both reading and math. So again, that kind of gray bar in the back represents the national average. And you'll see here that all grade levels as a whole are well above the national mean. And if we look at our student groups, positives and some areas for support, you can see here that not every student group is performing above that national average. But we do have several groups within that national average range, but we still need to continue to work, continue to work to reduce the achievement gaps of some of our student groups. Switching gears to our AP. So again, this represents the scores from last spring for students who took the AP exam. And what we found out is that the district has far exceeded, far exceeded national standards. And we talk about percentage of kids who are getting a three or higher and the overall average score on those assessments. So 91% of our students who took those exams received a three or higher on the test that they took compared to 60% in the national sample. And you can see here, we actually broke it down by each of the levels, five, four, three, two, and one. And very high percentages of our students are at the five and four range for each of the major content areas. Going all the way from high school AP exam performance to early literacy and foundations. So when we look at our DIBELS data, again, so this, these assessments were created so that we could identify which students might need some additional support in their early literacy skills. We looked at last fall, very similar in terms of perform, the proportion of students in each of the performance bands. And that what we'll see is that most kids are on track to continue to develop their literacy skills with core support at the classroom And so the next slide shows what that looks like. A lot of colors, a lot of bars, but I wanted to kind of show what that looked like because the DIBELS collects very specific skill information. These are designed to be very quick screening measures. And the slide here, I'll see letter name fluency, phoneme segmentation fluency, and maze reading comprehension. And you'll see two bars for each grade level. So that's their previous fall and, or last fall and then this fall. But I want to point out that phoneme segmentation that we see that, you might wonder like, why is that bar so red? Well, these are phoneme segmentation, and those are kindergarten students. So that's one of the areas that kids just aren't ready to really grapple with yet at kindergarten. But if you look at what happens when they get to first grade, that red bar is quite low. So those are the kinds of things that we're identifying supporting and that these are things that, you know, continue to, students continue to develop with that core support at the classroom level. Again, you'll see kind of very similar proportion of students in that potential area of support. And here's some of the other measures collected by DIBELS, oral read fluency and oral read And here's some of the academic strategies we're.
Yes. So I'm going to say our overall approach to student achievement is anchored in high-quality evidence-based curriculum. The slide that you even saw before, that is a result of the UFLI curriculum. As you saw those kindergartners when it was, can I back this up one slide, Jonathan? Do you mind? So each, I'm going to go back one more. So even the letter naming fluency, you'll see incoming, the young five or kindergartners, right, then when they became first graders, you see the need for intensive support greatly reduces, which is the result of that evidence-based curriculum in those grade levels. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out. We are also focusing on strong tier-one instruction. Our team is getting out to buildings, looking at engagement along with our evidence-based curriculum, and giving our teachers and our principals professional development around what is strong tier-one instruction, and also providing timely targeted interventions to support all of our students. Ongoing professional development is a priority with principals and teachers collaborating through MTSS and PLCs to use data and promote equity. We are also pursuing additional training opportunities such as letters, language essential for teachers of reading and spelling for literacy to further enhance instructional practices and support teacher growth.
And just wanted to point out that some of this information was included in that magazine that went out this fall. You'll see there's a slide or a page, I should say, in the magazine about key data metrics, which shares some of that information around the AP, some of the state assessment information, as well as some of our course grade data that we shared last spring at our end-of-year data presentation. And that's it. Welcome. Any questions or feedback?
Great. Thank you very much. I'm actually going to start with Josh, our student co-chair.
I have like three kind of groups of questions. So one around the PSAT and SAT data. I noticed that you didn't include the PSAT and nine and 10 data. Is there a reason for that?
So the nine and 10 are part of what students participate in, but they're not part of the state and federal accountable assessment system. So I, what we have typically presented is the state and federal accountability test, but we do have that information. It's just not, and that's something we couldn't decide to include, but we wanted to keep it to what's required from the state and federal law. But that's a good question.
And then slide, on slide nine, and you don't have to go all the way back, you talked about the number of restorative practices, which was around 100, and then you had the suspension number. Are the restorative practices included like in the suspension number? Or is that like a separate?
No, those are like, those would be like actions that we might take as a result of an office referral. Those are independent of suspension. So they may have been related to a suspension, or they may not have been. Just these are the kinds of things that happen.
And then lastly, the, at the high school level, the Panorama data is way up. So woo. I will say, I took it as normal. And the length to take it was like under five minutes. And also, I will say, my class was one of the cookie party classes. So we had a good turnout in the survey data. With that said, like, we didn't get an extra advisory day. And especially now with the past couple of years, we've been getting part of our advisory already taken away for things like fire drills or tornado drills, because those are now prioritized in that advisory time. So we're already losing time to that. And then you maybe have to go to another school, so that's another 10 minutes. Like, you could, working to either make sure there isn't a fire drill or other drill on that day, or again, adding another advisory day. Now with it, it's shorter, just me, I would say, just removing the, making sure there isn't a fire drill on the day that you're putting it out. And then lastly, I'm going to say, I really would encourage you to go like full circle mode. So communicate, communicate, and communicate what you do with the data that you just got to us so that when it comes springtime, like you can be like, hey, we already took this data that you gave us, and this is what we're doing with it. That way, again, that brings more people to give you more feedback, and then you can just do more.
And you're referring to the student survey, right? Like, how are we using that to then drive what happens at the high school?
And you communicate that directly to the students.
Good note. So we'll take that to our high school team, and we'll, we'll do something with it for sure.
Thank you.
And I did want to point out that a few kids said in those three responses, it's not like anyone's ever going to read this. And I'd read that. So I read that.
I did read it.
So someone did read it. And they did say, it's not like we see changes. So some people mentioned that too. So they mentioned they want to see changes as a result of what they're responding to.
Thank you, Josh. Okay. Member Boss?
My only question or concern is, do we have specific things that are happening to increase the belonging for the students in high school? I see that as worrisome. And I want to know, what are we doing to make them feel like they belong? They'll, I mean, you're telling us that they'll do better. They'll perform better if they feel like they belong. So what do we do?
And so I don't, I don't have those things. So that's part of our high school team plan? So Jen, I don't know if you have any information you can share about that?
Yeah. So, you know, I think from just initially, even just all of the clubs and activities that we offer, but actually in the classroom too, I was just out doing walkthroughs and things that seem so little but are so big. The teacher knowing every single name of every student in their class, right, greeting them when they come in the door, noticing when they're not feeling well or when something's going on. I was in a classroom yesterday, and within the first five minutes of the period, the teacher literally said every student's name, notice who didn't even have somebody sitting next to them, ask if they wanted to move so they'd be able to connect with the group. So those are even just some of the daily things that are happening. Hallways, you will even see at passing time, staff is greeting, saying hello, even if they don't know them, just making that eye contacted, so eye contact, so they do feel heard and seen, along with also some of the SCL curriculum in the classroom, right, making connections with kids and how they make connections with each other. There's some examples.
I'll layer on to that. When we look at individual school improvement plans, the target is to look at areas. So when we see the survey, when we see our achievement data, that informs their school improvement plans in terms of their goals at a school level. You'll see those highlighted. For example, we've seen through Dr. Lilly's presentation for the elementary, really kind of an aggregate of what they're doing at the elementary level. You'll see, I think next month will be the middle school. So sense of belonging, because that is an area that needs to be a focus based on the data at every single grade level, you'll see that is informing really their plans for school improvement. You'll also see it at the high school level. But it will be individualized based on their individual data. So for some, if it's really around strategies of inclusion, some it might be around even the discipline, if they're looking at the high school level with increased bullying or things along those lines. So they're making some specific efforts to address that through various means or strategies within their school improvement plan. But we'll be able to communicate high level at the board through these elementary, middle, and high school. You'll actually see sense of belonging in everybody's because it's really showing up as a space that we need to put some more attention.
Thank you.
Member Westra?
First of, so first of all, I got to see this presentation in the SPA committee, and I want to thank you for taking all the suggestions that we made and including all the trend lines and, and everything. I was wondering, with the teacher-student relationships on the nine through 12, since there was a free response, was there kind of any that was specifically around that? Were there any kind of trends that you saw in terms of the free responses?
Not yet. So with, looking at those about 7,000 free responses, when you think of like the three through 12, or yeah, three through 12. So it's, take a while to kind of get to them and see patterns, because those are all, you know, some kids said a lot. And so haven't seen any patterns yet. We haven't, you know, gotten too deep in yet. So that's something we want to look at, see if you see any patterns of what kids said. And so we will read every, every comment. We have read every comment, and now we need to kind of like consolidate that to see like what was actually said. That can help add to what we've asked them, those closed response questions.
I will also add that that is disaggregated for the schools by school. So they take that information as well so that it's actionable as a part of their plan.
It's not just me reading it. So every building has that as part of their plan. So they're looking, so each building can see there are, say, 200 responses, and kind of make sense of those as they build their sense of belonging within the building. So there's probably more than, more of that happening that I'm not aware of at each building.
And Dr. Merritt, I don't know if I can add that elementary principals began that today. So there was six elementary principals along with Dr. Lilly beginning to go through that data and their data story and looking at their fall results and do exactly that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Member Keel?
I want to thank Josh for going first. He had great questions. I did want to follow up on one of the things that he asked, the PSAT 9-10. You mentioned that we're only looking at the state and federal required programs, but the NWA is not state and federal required, right?
Correct.
So.
I think he was answering just the question around the PSAT.
Right. But so why did we choose to include the NWA but did not include the PSAT 9-10?
Probably just because of historical reasons. I mean, that's also because that's what the state reports. The state doesn't report nine and 10 because it's not a technically a state test, because they don't offer an alternate form for students who might need an alternate, alternate assessment. And so it's, it can't be used as part of the federal accountability system.
No, I understand.
And so, yeah, so it's just, just kind of, so we mimic how the state reports, the state assessment data really was the core reason.
I understand. But if we're choosing the reports that we're bringing forward because they're part of the state reporting standard, then we should not include the NWA. And if we're not choosing them because, if we're choosing the reports because they're valuable, then we should include the PSAT 9-10, or we should stop doing the PSAT 9-10 if we don't find that they're valuable.
So I wouldn't say that a board meeting is the value, because also when we're, there's a lot of information that we share. And so that's why you get all of the documents as well. But when we're getting the presentation, the importance of NWEA, as we've shared here at the board table, is when we get our INSTEPP, MSTEPP results, that's after our students have already left the classroom. When we look at NWEA, it allows us really real-time actionable data. So you're going to just see that multiple windows.
And we've talked about the value of NWA many, many times. My question is, do we find value in the PSAT 9-10?
You want to ask me personally about a lot of assessments?
Ultimately, the question is.
I'd like to get to more common assessments, what's happening within.
I think the struggle is, is that we're testing our kids a lot.
Yes.
And if we don't find that that, that test is valuable for us to bring to the board level, unless that test is valuable in the regular process, we should stop doing it. So that's, because it's not coming forward to the board level, then that's, that's ultimately the question. And that's what I'm trying to get to the heart of. If, if the answer is, we actually find this incredibly valuable, but we use it in these other ways, then share that with us.
And I don't think by not including it wasn't a comment on whether it was or was not valuable. It was just, we were mimicking how the state reports those, the state assessment data and just doing the same thing. So I think it's something we can discuss as being part of a future presentation. And we can even include it in some follow-up information if, to see, you know, how it adds to that. Except, yeah, it's not saying it's not, is or is not valuable. It's just, it was just, we were just mimicking how the state reports the data.
And I'll also say, just advocate for the team, again, the presentations, because we've come here before where it's like, too much, too much, get down to eight minutes. And we're like, well, we need a little bit more time for. So we just want to just get consistency on what, so it's not, this is not a value statement, but I appreciate your feedback.
I think it is an important thing that we need to consider, because our students feel overtested.
A hundred percent.
And I think that's something that we need to take a look at to see whether, if the tests, and we've had a lot of dialogue and conversation about the NWA, and even though they're not required by the state, there's a lot of discussion on how important those are.
Yes.
And so we're deferring to your judgment on that. But when a test doesn't come forward, it feels like maybe it's not as valuable. And that's, that's my questioning, my wondering, to use a Newcomer's words.
Appreciate your question.
And I also want to commend the entire team, including the SPA committee, for the work that you've done in creating the visualizations for this. You brought a tremendous amount of information that really, made it really easy to comprehend. So thank you so much for doing that in a really concise way. The other question I had was to follow up on one that Josh mentioned on suspensions and restorative practices. I thought restorative practices were baseline for everything that we do. I would have expected to see double the number of restorative practices as the number of suspensions. You know, the fact that we have 250 suspensions, but yet only 100 restorative practices feels like we've got those numbers backwards.
So in terms of restorative practices, it may not be a one-to-one correlation. So there, there may be times when we always have to consider is a restorative work necessary? You could have a suspension that's based on, let's even say, this sounds counterproductive when we talk about attendance, but as our policy would say, you know, you have a detention for missing, and then eventually you might, it might result in suspension. You're not restorative, it might not be a restorative meeting that you have because you haven't caused a harm to another student. So in terms of what is calculated as restorative meetings, it might not be that one-on-one correlation with. And you also have to have.
I'd like to maybe drill down on that later. And because to me, when a student is not present in class, and then they come back in after a substantial number of absences, they end up harming the rest of the class because the rest of the class has to get that student up to speed. So there is a restorative aspect, and the whole premise of the restorative practice is non-punitive. And suspensions are typically viewed as punitive in the process. And I'd love to see us move to one where we're trying to do more restoration rather than more punitive.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would agree. I think what's reported would be that incident. So if you share that they might cause harm to, we would not necessarily say this student has missed school. Now, parents, do you agree to bring this student in front of their class and do a restorative circle to say, I haven't been here? So that, there's not going to be a one-to-one correlation.
Restorative stratives don't have to be a whole circle, but they're still in the restorative meeting that you're doing to try to, instead of.
Let's, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I jump in really quickly? On the PSAT.
I was going to just say one second.
Sorry, no, you go.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to acknowledge, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's going to go back around.
Josh, go ahead. I'll allow you to.
I was just going to say, on the PSAT nine and date, nine and 10 data, it is helpful for the students as well because like we get to practice for the SAT.
Appreciate that feedback. A lot of my board colleagues, I mean, gobbled up what I was going to say. Josh, you and I, I think, coalesced around the same topics around the restorative practices and suspensions. You know, I think you did a really great job in terms of just packaging all this data. My wondering was, you mentioned suspensions was very similar to last year. In terms of our number of restorative practices, how does that compare from last year? And are we seeing a correlation of less suspensions as we do more restorative practices? Is there enough data to show some sort of trend between those two?
I don't know, but like we can find out.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing that I had questioned, this came up in our Student Voice in Action Committee over last year. We had a great meeting with you and some other folks from the district as well as some folks representing the Panorama survey. So my wondering is, you know, did we take some of that feedback from the Student Voice team and implement that into this year's Panorama survey implementation?
Right, I think we did and I think this can continue to work as we, now that we have data as the administrative team at PSEP and Sarkwatha got together and decided on what were the top carries and then kind of more consolidated, moved forward and to Josh's point, and then saying, now what? Now how are we going to use that information to then make, make it better for students?
Yeah.
So yes, they had, they did, we did take that, all that in, kind of incorporate that as we kind of revise that survey.
Sure, sure. Well, I also, these are just more observations and questions. You know, I noticed that growth mindset in middle school is an area of focus. So I look forward to the middle school presentation to see how we're tackling that. And then, you know, from the achievement standpoint, we, those gaps still persist. So I think that's an area of focus that we all ask about every year and are very concerned about. So we want to, want to see how we're always focusing on, on closing those achievement gaps as well. Okay, those are my few cents. Thank you. Members to do?
Great conversations, great questions. I'll touch on a few. One I brought up during SPA, which was the percentage of students that are taking AP tests. So if you could get that to us, I did not see that in board notes. And in SPA, we did have a conversation, would it be worthwhile to look at IB students? And I thought that's also another data point. If you have it, it's easily accessible. With the AP, I'd also like to get demographic data in terms of subgroups, on how many students are actually taking that opportunity. So again, this can all go in board notes. With regard to growth mindset that was just mentioned, I think it would be helpful for the community to know, and some of us, this was a conversation in our Board Governance Workshop. Why is growth mindset important? Why do we talk about it? If you want to answer that now, you can.
I think what it.
If you want to do it in board notes, you can. If you, but this is something that has come up at the board table and I think it's important for the community to understand if we're collecting this data on growth mindset, what is it? Why is it important?
The interesting piece, and we haven't really had a chance to talk with the full team. I shared with Core, I shared with the board that I had the opportunity to join the Wayne Rees team to see John Hattie, Dr. John Hattie. And the interesting piece that he brought forward, which I said, this is going to be something that we need to chew on because we talk about growth mindset so much. But in terms of the indicator for success, he's now saying that that is not one of the higher factors that would determine success of students. So why are we speaking of it so much, right? And so that is some work that we need to do in terms of, you know, let's look at what the research is saying. We put so much of an emphasis on this, but where are we really getting the movement for students? And how do we focus more on those?
And I would go beyond John Hattie. Some of the stuff that's come out has, his has gone back and forth. So I would look at a wide range of research on that because some is very convincing. So that's, I'll throw that out there in terms of however you want to respond to that. You can chew on that. But again, I think it's important for the community to know and understand, and for students to know and understand that what is it and why does it matter, if it matters? We had actually talked about in SPA, the NWEA grades two, four, five, six. What's contributing to the downward trend? You know, you had talked about you were working on the analysis. I think again, at some point, it would be helpful for you to come back to us and say, this is what we found. And I made a statement in SPA that as a board member, I don't want to look at this data for the sake of looking at data. I want to question, I want to probe for deeper understanding. I want to challenge all of us to find out where can we do better? Where do you need the board to invest more resources and support? We don't know that until we have these conversations in much more detail. And the last thing I'll talk about is the slide, I believe it's 29, where we continue to see the gaps with subgroups in trying to get a better understanding, what factors contribute to these gaps? And, you know, we've had these discussions year after year after year. And I went back to the slide three, I believe it was, where we said our goal A was to raise achievement for all students and eliminate the gaps. But we still struggle to do that. How, when, what do we need? And this is my year eight, nine, having this, the same conversation. I'd like to get clarity on what do you need from the board to move these so that all students are achieving at higher levels? To look at some of the scores of our students, you know, lower end of the gray area is not somewhere that I'm comfortable. We can grow students a little bit more.
Right, and I think that, and I think Jen highlighted some of the activities that, you know, we're banking on and the research is saying that are beneficial and if we do it well, will contribute to, you know, more students learning. And so unfortunately, I mean, education as a whole hasn't figured out the gaps yet. So we're trying our best based on kind of what we know is best practice and works for most and all students to chip away at that, you know? And it's, it's a difficult task because we, we haven't found, if we knew a colleague that fixed it, we'd be right there next to them figuring out, finding out what they did. So we're all kind of trying to figure this out and doing what we think is best, including all the things from, you know, Student Voice and just getting all those things, putting it together to kind of increase, you know.
And I think that's the challenge for you all in terms of researching school districts that are breaking this norm and moving beyond. At MASB, I did have an opportunity to attend a school district workshop where they were shattering this and moving beyond. And I shared those in my notes if you all would take a look. And I would say, study some districts. I don't know if what they're doing there can be replicated here or some pieces, but I think it's worth looking at.
Absolutely. On that point, do we see within our district uniformity across all of our schools and the subgroups? Or do we see some schools that are performing better than others?
I don't know.
And I know we don't, I know we, I know we as a board don't drill into that. I'm asking the question as an administration, are there lessons to be learned within our own district? Because then we've got uniform curriculum and everything else that we're doing. If we see some teachers, some schools, that some grades that are doing a better job, is there an opportunity for us to learn from ourselves internally and lift up those best practices?
Yeah, that was part of those discussions that Jen was talking about with the elementary team today. They, I mean, they were talking about where they were seeing gains, you know, and positive success and like whether it's a grade level team, whether it's students in some of their buildings. It's hard to compare building to building because they serve such different neighborhoods and population of kids that it's, a lot of times it's hard to compare. But yes, but those discussions happen within.
But if you're looking at these same subgroups, then you can start to analyze the data around that. I mean, this isn't something that can be done at a school level. It's something that has to be done at the district level where you've got access to all the different data and then start asking the whys.
Well, I would agree, and it still definitely can be done at the school level because your, your needs could be, just because of some group of students.
Understand, understand. I understand that you may have double categories in some states situation.
Intersection.
Or intersection of those things and, yeah, so it just, it would be useful for us as a board to see, to hear feedback from the administration on that point, that we're seeing success in some areas and we're looking to learn from those things. Or we're seeing uniformity across the whole district. When we look at our subgroups of economically disadvantaged students, they're consistent across every school in the process. That means we have a systemic problem across everything that we're doing, not a problem isolated to a particular building.
We've got a systemic problem in the whole assessment system. I would say it was created without many sub, with demographic groups in mind. The system of education was created without many demographic groups in mind. So I just have a fundamental problem. That's what I would love to do. I love to blow that up.
Let's blow that up.
I love it because it does not indicate. I want to also, at the same time we talk about these gaps, I want to celebrate our students when we look at that range on the national average that our students, our, with all of these things and this assessment, to my point, is not designed with them in mind, and still have the ability to perform. And so there's some things that we celebrate and we have to work to eradicate.
Because that gray band is across, that's the national average period across all groups. It's not based upon the subgroups in there.
That's right.
But we made it a goal for many.
No, I'm on board.
As it should be.
I'm asking the question. I just was trying to do a follow up.
So that, that's when you ask, like, as a board, we definitely have made it a goal. We have work to do. And what can we do is, is hold our feet to the fire to improve it and celebrate for our students. Because what I can't stand is when we walk away and people think, oh, you've done all of these interventions, you put all of these work and black students just can't learn. That is an absolute false statement. But people believe that because they continue to think, well, you're doing all this. You've been working for it all these years and students aren't achieving. And I think that that's a disservice to our young people.
I think the question is, where are we missing the mark?
Even that, that question about miss, like, how can we do that better? How can we?
That's what I mean. How, how do we serve our students better in these subcategories, knowing that different students have different needs?
Yes.
So what support systems can be put into place? The support system for multilingual learners may not be the support system for other groups.
Yes.
So this is where you all have to dig deeper in terms of what do students need? And it is so individualized.
Absolutely.
And you did such amazing work on the grading policies at the, at the middle school level and how that changed the outcomes of those students. I mean, that was fantastic work in that process. So I think, you know, that kind of thinking applied across the other areas.
Absolutely.
You know, I didn't want to belabor the point, but I'll just add one other thing. When our students do go on to the next level of higher ed or whatever it may be, and having, you know, serving in some higher ed capacity, these gaps just persist. If we can stop this, especially with math, our students can excel in going into nursing school, going into accounting, going into business schools, not being held back by those classes that they have to repeat over and over and over again.
Absolutely. You know that workshop that we had, a couple, I think it was last year, it's another, it's a bigger community conversation. So when we even look at our students that are testing kindergarten and where they're coming in, at that year, we showed the data, I believe that they were 13 percentage points down. The gap already existed in very first assessment, very first experience with school for math and 21% for ELA. And these are babies that are growing, they're making their year of growth. We have to, in order to catch them up off the gate, they have to grow a year and a half, right? And we still, they need to be kids and we have to supply them with what they need. So even when we think about community and what are we doing for our, our youngest learners before they get in school? And now we have to deal with the fact that Head Start or programs that are intended to help even at a federal level are at risk. So it is such a, I'm so glad that we talk about it all the time because we must. It's a, I would say an epidemic and it's pervasive and it has to begin with all. It's not, not just the time that they enter school, you know?
Members to do, any more questions? Okay, remember on that?
I had a couple of questions. One of them was around the slide on the achievement gaps. And my question was, how many people, how many students fall into multiple categories? So are we double counting or how do we isolate the kids who perhaps might be in multiple categories?
This, I mean, this, there are some. And we could, that's something that we can find out how many students are in multiples. So this would be just, you know, alone, you know, like for example, multilingual learners could be in multiple. They could be in, you know, a specific, you know, racial, ethnic category. They could be economic, so that's something we can find out and we absolutely know that information.
It actually would be good information to do that same workshop that I was talking about. We talked about that intersection. And when we look about, you know, I'll, I'll speak again to our African-American and black students. When it's 11% of our overall student population, but of our economically disadvantaged, they made a disproportionate amount. And the number one indicator really of student success are, would be their socioeconomic status. So we have students that are showing up as economically disadvantaged, which is one barrier. Also receiving special education services, which is another barrier. So it'd be good to get the updated information of the intersection of those demographic groups as well.
I think we did that a couple of years ago. I think we did that for one, before you were on the board. I think we did present some of that, so it might be worth looking at that again.
Thank you. And then my other questions were on the Mstep performance trend.
Yep.
So I'm curious what the leadership teams think about, like, the really great improvement in the social studies curves? And then the counter to that is, like, what's happening in fourth grade?
So the social studies could be that the state set new cut scores this past year. So my, my guess is that it had to do with, so every, I think, I don't know if it was new. I think they just looked at the cut scores again, like, are we drawing the line where we think it should be? And so they, they decided, you know, maybe it should be here. So it could be slightly artificial or it could be real. So either way, it's probably partially due to the state changing the cut scores, but it also could be due to how, there's really no way to tell other than looking at the relative performance to the state and the county to see like how much of that was from state cut scores changing. But positive nonetheless.
And then what we think is happening in fourth grade?
So fourth grade, let's see, go back to that one. This was in the trend of Mstep, correct?
Yes. It's slide 33, I think, if my number is right.
Fourth grade math or fourth grade in general?
At fourth grade in general, because both ELA and math, you see the dip.
Yep. And those are interesting. So fourth grade, so do, do, do. Yeah, so that's part of the, kind of looking at that, digging into that. So there is some things, I think we, kind of focusing on those activities to kind of figure out where we are. I think we're increasing our knowledge about kind of more common assessments across the grade level that give us more information, that we're doing much more work at, especially in math at the elementary, to maybe collect data that are closer to the instruction to give us more information before they get to the end of their assessment and find out, oh, wow, they didn't do too great or they did great. So we're putting more efforts into, as a grade, at grade level teams in math specifically.
Jonathan, I can add to that too. I know they've also drilled down the data to really look specifically at problem solving. So we're doing math labs in some of our elementaries where that was a very needed skill. So we have instructional coaches and district coaches working with teams of teachers on specific math problem-solving skills in the classroom.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
So next year, we should see this turning upward, right?
Hopefully, I mean, so what we know is that sometimes good work takes a long time to fall impact. So yes, hopefully we'll see it next year, but it might take the time of doing good work to really infiltrate across the board and really make that huge impact. So yes, hopefully we see some increases next year for sure.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, up next we have a first reading for the approval of a resolution for a new course proposal, AP Physics C Mechanics.
Great, thank you. Advanced Placement Physics C Mechanics would be a year-long calculus-based physics course for students in grades nine, 12. It is designed for students interested in physical sciences or engineering. The course offers rigorous college-level content aligned with college board curriculum and provides students the opportunity to earn college credit. Students would investigate key physics topics through conceptual study, mathematical modeling, and hands-on laboratory experience, experiences. Enrollment requires completion or concurrent enrollment in calculus. The course supports the learner profile by fostering collaboration, critical thinking, communication, innovation, and global citizenship. The total projected cost is $25,000, covering digital textbooks, test prep, lab materials with additional teacher training, costs to be determined. If approved, the course would be begin next school year. And we do have a course of the book or a copy of the book if you'd like to see it as well.
Okay, we'll open it up to questions. Josh, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to say that this is amazing. I know a lot of high schoolers that I know wanted to take the AP class for physics but then realized that it wasn't calc-based, so this is a great resource for them now. Sadly, it won't impact my year. And then just thank you for putting this forward.
Remember Voss?
No questions, thank you.
Remember Westra?
I have no real questions. I'm grateful that you're bringing this forward because I know that the enrollment and the, I know that it's needed. Thank you.
And I'm sorry if I missed this. Is this replacing the, the non-physics-based one or is it in addition to?
No, it is not. Do you want?
Yep, do you want?
I'm sorry, the non-calcule-based one?
No, currently, we have AP Physics I, that is an algebra-based course. We are not replacing the course. Right now, we want to offer both. This is AP Physics C Mechanics, and it's part of the AP Physics C, so we have AP Physics C Mechanics and AP Physics C Electricity and Magnetism. Right now, we're only looking at the first course. And that will offer more credits. So we are not looking at replacing the one we have right now.
So I guess, towards that end, I mean, as, as I've spoken to students and my own students went through this process, the algebra-based physics was deemed interesting but useless for them for college credit.
That's exactly why they're doing this.
And so I guess, why are we still offering that class? Instead of, because then we have a limited number of educators and a limited number of things, why wouldn't we just move to the, to this and to the magnetism class?
Yeah, so, so far, we chose to keep the class because we have a handful of students still interested, and we want to offer that to the students that are not enrolled in calculus because this new course will have a calculus requirement.
And would the magnetism class also have a calculus requirement?
The, which one? The first one?
You said there was, this is the mechanics, and you said there was AP Physics Magnetism?
If we eventually, long-term, think about offering the other course, it also has the calculus requirement.
Okay, thank you. So this is, this, keeping the other course provides an option for students that are interested in physics but are not yet to the point of achieving calculus?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions for me. Member Sedu?
We discussed this in SPA as well and agree with the move in terms of students ask for this, they need, especially if they're going into some calc-based engineering programs. And I do agree, keeping with AP Physics I for students that are not calc-based but also want to pursue AP courses, I think that option's good for them.
No questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Curry, do you want to take us through the next?
Yes, thank you. So the peer-to-peer elective course provides a collaborative environment where neurotypical and neurodiverse students learn together, build meaningful relationships, and develop skills for lifelong success. This proposal seeks to further expand the program to include a music elective with curriculum aligned to the Michigan Performing Arts standards. The course fosters inclusion, leadership, empathy, and community, benefiting students by improving academic, social, and behavior outcomes, as demonstrated by positive data and feedback. No new staffing or significant costs are required, as existing teachers and resources will support the course, with instruments funded through special education activity accounts and current software licenses in place. If approved, the implementation would begin January 2026, so next semester.
Josh, any questions?
No questions. I just want to say I'm very, 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 very excited for this class. So I actually had the opportunity to do the peer-to-peer arts class this semester, and it has thoroughly changed my life. And then, because of that, I've now done the unified sports teams, working with the same kids, and it's been amazing. So I'm really excited for this class. I'm actually trying to sign up for it and move my schedule around, which is really complicated. But yes, this, like, this class is needed, and then it also gives the, the peers their opportunity to get a new elective into their schedule. So a lot of them have been using art and cooking over and over again for the last several years, so they'll be able to experience music now. So a great change in addition. Thank you.
No questions? Thank you. Member Restra.
I, I echo Josh's enthusiasm, so thank you for bringing this forward.
I'd love to hear the enthusiastic endorsement. How is enrollment in these peer-to-peer classes? Is?
Yeah. Ms. Williams, do you want to come up? She can give you the exact numbers.
The, the class is full. Half of it is general education students, half the class is special education students. And so it runs at 15 and 15.
Okay. And so we're full, and we only offer one section then?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, is there room for, I mean, obviously, we're adding a whole nother class. Is there then room for additional sections? Is there more demand for this class than, than what we have?
I would have to look into that, but to my knowledge, I think this is sufficient with the students that we have to participate.
Okay, thank you.
Members Sedu, any questions?
No questions, but I think we need to take Josh and make a commercial out of this so people understand. And more people take it.
No questions. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Up next, we have Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick. We have, actually, this is an action item, so it's action item number 26-11-19. Consider approval of a resolution for an agreement with Benchmark Transportation. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Ms. Christensen, I, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for agreement with Benchmark Transportation. This will be a final reading, and the action item is 26, 11, 19.
Craig, can I have a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Ahmed. We already, we had a first reading of this and had discussion. Any other comments, questions about this particular resolution? Hearing none, I'm gonna call.
I just wanted to thank the FNO Department for doing this and looking for opportunities for savings.
Great. All right. At this point, I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six, zero. Okay. We do not have any citizens' comments overflow section, so we are actually going to move on to the area of discussion. So as I mentioned in our, my president's report, the board and Dr. Merritt were working on, of course, our, our board governance. And part of that is developing our board goals. So the team got together, you know, over, over a series of meetings and developed our goals for this year. But we want to develop some action behind each of our objectives. So at tonight's discussion, we'll be focusing on objective number one. You all should have a physical copy of our board goals on hand. We really want to, you know, make some smart goals around our goals, if that makes sense. So I'm just going to read this out loud so the community can follow along. But board objective number one is really around strengthening the connection and communication between the Board of Education, PCCS community, and broad groups of community stakeholders through a layered approach. And we have some sub-goals within that goal. Would another board member please read the first, first one? And what kind of popcorn, if you don't mind?
Sure. The first, in addition, those, this objective number one aligns to goals C and D as part of our dynamic plan. So we take the same approach that the administration does in all of our work in aligning to that dynamic plan. So the first sub-goal that we have is develop a 2025, 2026 Board of Education calendar of outreach efforts designed to engage the PCCS community around various topics, including dynamic plan updates, bond, and capital projects, and how education is funded.
Yes. So I'm going to open this up more in, as like workshop style, so I'm, I'm, would love to have a more casual dialogue around this. What, do we have any ideas on how, how we can make this more actionable?
So I think the topic of education funding is always one that we've, we've struggled with. We've done some nice webinars in the, in the past, and I think we should consider that again. There's also an opportunity for us to talk about not only the, the three types of potential or the multiple types of different funding mechanisms that exist, from our standard funding that we get from the, the state government, to the regional enhancement village, to the, the capital programs that we do with our bond, and then the potential for things like sinking funds. And to use as an opportunity to educate our community on what those programs are and how they, they fit and how they work.
In, in the past, I've mentioned that we have community members that are not connected to our school district, meaning they don't have students, they're not teaching here. And when I walked my dog around my neighborhood, people are always asking what's happening with this, what's going on here? And, and one of the things I suggested a little while ago was inviting the community, everybody in PCCS, because it took everybody to pass that bond. Invite them to see our projects, see the upgrades through the bond that was passed bond 2020, and give them an opportunity to maybe do a little bus tour, go from building to building, and it could be, you know, high school one day, elementaries another, or it could just be, you know, however we want to do this, but my proposal is bring everybody out and have them look at what we're doing and if questions, if they have any.
I do like that because I, I, you know, I think that's a good suggestion, a suggestion in terms of seeing where these investments are going. I do know, though, that the district has done versions of this, correct? I, I was not able to attend, but there was an event where, I believe it was community members, board members, council.
It was, it was parent council, but it was limited to, the outreach was limited to our families.
What was the one that we did at the high school recently?
That was the community. We didn't have, as much turnout in terms of invitation.
But was it, I know we invited many, many people in the community and have been involved with the project and those that have been supportive in the community, but was it a broad, did we broadcast this and an invitation to the, the community as a whole?
We definitely could open it up. So it was by invitation. We didn't just put on the website, here, everybody show up on.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, fair, fair.
Yeah, so I think that's one of the things that a new friend's trying to perhaps do. I'm not sure that the bus, I think we should probably try to do it at one school because you really don't know who's going to show up. And you don't want to have, you know, 500 people waiting for one school bus.
Bummer. That'd be a real bummer.
But, yeah.
Hey, the interest would be there. You saw that many people. That's exciting.
Yeah, no, I know. It's just, I think that.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, we, we, I think, I think it's a really good point is, how do we promote this to the different groups? You know, we do a really good job when we, to be frank, when we have an ask of the community, when we need their support for a bond or any other project like that. But I think we need to find a way to be able to go out to them as well and, and update them on the initiatives and the work that's going on. And I think that the newsletter, the, the magazine, whatever we call it, is, is a fantastic thing. But that, is that only going to family members?
No, that's going to community members.
So that goes to everybody? Fantastic, okay.
Yep. So that could be a good way to advertise if we have some type of.
If we do an event like that, that'd be a way that we can let people know.
Yes.
I think another thing would be taking the roadshow concept around our school board things to places like the Rotary. You know, the community organizations.
Adfellows.
Adfellows. Display at the library.
Yeah. The library's oftentimes looking for displays. They, at least in Plymouth, I don't know about Canton, but they have displays that they do.
I wonder, too, just along those lines, is there a way to sort of double-dip on some of these ideas? You know, you mentioned inviting the community to see our projects and our upgrades. Well, could we perhaps host something at one of our new, newly renovated spaces that maybe speaks to how schools are funded, or maybe speaks to a topic that's important?
That's a great idea.
Or maybe, come, you do coffee with Monica quite often, maybe there's a, you know, an event where we have an open conversation with those who would like to, to come hang out. Could we do a board meeting in a different location in one of the newly renovated spaces? It's a good question. I think there's some logistics in terms of gumming, but I'm just sure that that's something we can investigate or explore.
Can we do it in a pool?
Board meeting in a pool? I don't know. I don't know.
Exactly.
We have to float for two hours?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking that'd be kind of fun.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Takes us off task.
Yes, yes. I think these are great ideas. What I would like us to see is maybe build out this calendar around some of these things. So, you know, the work outside of maybe this dialogue or this conversation, maybe during our next agenda review planning meeting, we can put people into teams and, and do some work around this, if that's okay.
I feel like we're going to be voluntold.
Oh, yeah. You will be voluntold. Please and thank you. Please and thank you, everybody here. Well, I'll have a part in this, so I appreciate some of that feedback. Is there anything else that we want to add to that first portion of the objective? No? Okay.
I do want to add this piece as my la, final plug for that last bullet.
I was going to move through each bullet, if you, if that's okay.
Oh, I thought, no, you're perfect. I missed that.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I thought you were ending the conversation.
No, no, not yet. I think we're still, we're still ticking through. That's okay.
Yes.
So the next one is really creating a tracking mechanism to measure those engagements around both Board of Education and broader groups of the PCCS community stakeholder. During our board workshop, this is something I, I voluntold myself or I volunteered to take this on. So as I think each board member attends these events that we get invited to, we encourage the community to invite the team or individuals to anything that's out there. But we certainly want to track it. I don't always know where we have all been, so I would like to collect that information and put it on a calendar. You know, maybe that is something that eventually becomes public-facing, I'm not quite sure, but at least some way to track where we've been, what we've seen, who's been there would be really great. So I, I'm happy to handle that tracking mechanism.
President Christensen, I wonder if there could be, and I'd be happy to build this, like, a little online Google form we all have access to, saying, I'm going here, and you fill in who you're going to see, the date, and it automatically goes into a spreadsheet for you. But the protocol still exists that we let President Christensen and Superintendent Merritt know when we're going into school-related events. But I do want to broaden this. I want to, you know, ask the community, like, bring us along to where you are in the community where you feel like we need to know more about the community, more about our students, more about, you know, different cultures and events, especially when our kids are present in these organizations. And for the teachers, students listening, please invite us to events. I think we did this really well two years ago. We had so many student groups reaching out to us, and I loved the options. And of course, not all of us can be at all of these events, but I think we'll do our best to go to as many as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's a really good idea. I try to do my best, too, during, like, each board meeting, during the president's report, acknowledging some of the events that our team members have been to. So again, that helps, helps reinforce that component. So I do appreciate that. Anything else on a tracking mechanism? Any other ideas there? Okay. Okay, we can move on to the third, third bullet point. Enhance and improve communications about board engagement and activate these through the website and district magazine. Dr. Merritt, I think you had something you wanted to say.
A result of that conversation, we talked about doing the board bio on the website. And so we have, I asked for this Friday to be the last date if you hadn't responded yet, because I don't want to put them up, we only have a few, like, hey, introduction, and we don't have all seven. So if you have not responded yet to the little form, just fill out a few things, and the team will build out that bio, and we can have that on the website. We really want to work, if you could also, like, I think you talked about a committee who wanted to work on even the redesign of your own website, so we can really make it engaging. That would be helpful as well. So that was just my ask to get those, that information, so we'll build out your bios for that website.
I was one of the delinquent folks. I just turned mine in today.
You actually were, I counted as one of the two, because we did yours first.
Oh, good. So I double-dipped. I filled out the Google form today, but we had the bio from our presentation, you're from our presentation, you're right, yes.
That mine, you got yours, that's right, was how you guys.
We're done, okay, I like that idea of, of a committee to the re, of the redesign, there have been some really good ideas during our board workshop sessions around that engagement piece, making it easier for someone to understand how to address a concern is, is an idea that was born out of some of the board workshop work, so, really being purposeful on the information that we do share on the board tab of, of our school website would be very helpful. Okay, anything else from the team? Any other ideas under this objective that we could make actionable, or that we could build out?
Capture pictures when you're at the locations for Board One, and then we could actually even get those with board members at events.
I wanted to just thank Trustee Voss for inviting us to the events, when we had, I think, what was it, two weeks ago?
Miracle League?
The Miracle League, yeah.
Yeah, last month, yeah.
And, I forgot to take pictures, but maybe if we have more of those opportunities for us to do some of that work collectively.
Yeah, I like, I, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I do have a wondering if we could commit to, like, from a, a community service kind of point of view, quarterly as a board, committing to maybe one event together as a team-building, community-building effort, and I, that stems out of your suggestion, certainly.
And if we all come next Friday, that will be our next community event for our fundraiser for.
It's this Friday.
Oh, it's this Friday.
This Friday, November 14th, at 7:00 PM, at Fox Hills.
That'll count us as the second quarter.
The PCF Foundation fundraiser, yeah, yeah, okay, any other thoughts there? Okay, well, I appreciate your input and work on this objective, the next meeting will, will focus on objective two, and I will also have assignments for, for the team on objective one items.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, last but not least, we have follow-up board questions, I believe these were satisfied in board notes from previous meeting, but tonight, I believe there were a few that were flying around, and I want to make sure that we capture all of those, I did not jot them down quickly enough.
I have some, if I could just repeat.
Yes, if you don't mind.
I asked for the percentage of students that are taking AP courses in all of our high schools, and also subgroup data on the students taking AP courses, as well as if Dr. Merritt and her team feel it's helpful to have IB data, I will leave that up to you, but I think, since we're already talking about AP courses, I'd like to dig in deeper in those.
Okay, I had a question about the number of restorative practices, how does that compare year-over-year, and if there was a, maybe a correlation between our suspension data? And I had a, you had a question, Judy, yes?
Well, I wanted to clarify, so, Dr. Merritt, you mentioned the research that was showing that perhaps growth mindset is not as big of a, a indicator of future success, and I was wondering what was, so, you don't have to answer right now, but I was wondering what that research was showing.
Okay. Okay, and then, Patrick, I believe you had a question, did you?
Yeah, the restorative practices, it's just, I would have expected that for the vast majority of suspensions, we have a restorative practice that we do around that, that, that process, because ultimately, our goal is to repair the harm that happens, and if we're just doing punitive, then it just feels like not doing things the way we want, and I think the second question was around that PSAT test, the nine, the nine-ten, and whether the test is valuable to us, I mean, Josh definitely mentioned there's practice for students that's important, I mean, I certainly don't want to eliminate it because of that, but if we're not actually using it, then make it an optional test, give people another choice for it, and if we're using it, I'd like to understand why.
Okay, so, around the restorative practices question, you're, is it really, are they being used?
Why are we not using them more often?
Okay, got it. Okay.
Why isn't every suspension not a restorative practice?
This is a question that I had, coming up, because I was going to ask you, Jonathan, are those unique, so if you have a restorative practice, would those be unique suspensions or not?
The, the restorative practices would be an action you might indicate with a behavior incident, there's also, there also could be a penalty, so they could be both, they could be separate, so it could be, so that's something we can dig in to see, like, how many of them are, they're happening in conjunction with a suspension, or independent of a suspension, or in lieu of a suspension, those are the things we can all investigate.
Jennifer, I believe you had a question about the student data presentation, but it was mentioned that it's going to come up in an upcoming presentation, so we're satisfied there, anyone, any other open questions?
I had a question about, on the achievement gap slide, how many students were falling, falling into multiple categories?
Yes.
And then, also, in the fourth grade M-step data.
Yep, thank you, I did type that one down, but it's not on my list here, yep, okay, all right.
I would say, also, there were some questions that came up that I answered in advance of the meeting, but there's still, I think there might have been a couple more questions from there, so if those, we can just put those in board notes as well.
Perfect. Okay, all right, and I want to thank everyone for hanging in there with us, we are at, my eyes are blurry, 9:14 PM, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting, so thank you very much.